It's right there.
Usually everything he gets is a hand me down. He's fifteen. So usually everything he gets is a hand me down. So this is like
Recording in progress.
It's like really exciting stuff.
I know.
Why doesn't this play out?
Exciting. How are you?
Hey.
Buddy, this is a Greenbelt City Council work session. My name's Emmett Jordan. I'm serving as the mayor. Can council introduce yourselves, please?
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, Jenny Pompey, council member.
Amy Neesele, council member.
Rodney Roberts, city council.
Okay. Let's see, any information items? I think I have one or two.
I have one.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Hey, so we hold these work sessions Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholders, gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. Work sessions and meetings are open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law so that residents and others can observe council's deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, so we'll pause periodically for public comment, usually every twenty minutes or so during these times. If you wish to address council, if you want to make a comment, if you raise your hand and you're in the room after being recognized, you can go over to the podium, state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. We need that for the minutes. If you are on Zoom, you can raise your virtual hand and we'll recognize you so that you can speak. And once again, please, we need your name and your address more or less for the minutes. Or you can submit a written question through, using the Q and A tab at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And finally, if you are watching on cable TV or on Facebook Live or YouTube, you can send us an email. If you send that email to questions@council, questions@greenbeltmd.gov, we'll do our best to respond. So if you would please limit your remarks to about three minutes and speak on one topic, please, on the question being considered, and please avoid questioning the motives of others. So tonight is a very special work session. We are sitting down and talking with Gate, Greenbelt Access Television. And you know, I think it's been a little while since the last time we had a work session. So I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves to the massive viewing audience out there. But first, I'd like to acknowledge Jose Samorron, our city manager. How are you tonight?
Good evening. I'm well, thank you. Glad to be here, and I'm joined by our public information officer, Shandrea Andrews.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, council.
Deputy Clerk, Shania.
Fantastic. Yeah, I think I recognize a couple of you. Where have I seen you before? Frank Travasi, do you want to introduce folks?
Yeah, Frank Travasi, I'm president of Greenbelt Access Television.
Who do you have with you then?
I have Sheila, who's our general manager, our CEO.
Executive Director.
Executive Director. She's got a lot of titles. Jennifer, hi, she's on our board of directors. John is our treasurer on our board of directors. Mike McMullin over there is on our board of directors, so is Conrad. You all know Conrad, I think. You all know all of us, so.
Well, fantastic. So in the packet that we received and that was posted for the public, there was a description of the history of Gate. Do you want to just verbally, you know, give us a quick overview? You've been, Conrad has been on the Gate board probably for as long as you, Frank.
Way longer, actually.
Do you want to share the history?
Sure. It started in nineteen eighty-five with the Cable TV Act. Congress set aside public access, and since then, seventeen hundred stations grew up around the country. The first was in New York City. It was in nineteen sixty-eight, I believe. And then when Congress passed the law in the late seventies and early eighties, that became what is now our, it was all cable at the time, you know? There wasn't broadcast. Now we, on the internet, of course, and the industry has changed tremendously, but we've been around since then. What we do, we were set up by city council. City council at the time, Tom White and Bob Zugby were on council, and they worked with council to set this up as, so it's a PEG industry, as you know. Public access, education, and government. And you guys are the government. Shandrea here runs that operation. And we run the public access and the education department, and so, and we do education in two ways. We do it with our shows. For example, we run Science Bowl every day. We run Democracy Now! and all sorts of things like that. And then we do a lot of what's happening in the community. We've got a ton of stuff, and since the very beginning. But we also do in-house classes. Tomorrow, we have our animation program for the rec department. We do kids' animation stuff. Sheila, just last week, finished the kids' learning filmmaking, so we have a bunch of new Fellinis and Scorseses coming out of Greenbelt. And that's what we've been doing ever since.
So just to step back a little bit, so Gate was founded, and is actually a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization?
Right, we're a nonprofit corporation, yes.
And you have offices in our community center there on the second floor, the, what is that, one and a half floor?
Yeah, we're on two oh four, which is the half light up with the newer wing of the community center, or the school, actually. So, yeah, we've been there for, I think, kind of, we've been there the whole time, haven't we? Except when it was...
Conrad, if you could step over to the...
Yeah, why don't you go up to the podium, Conrad? My phone? Okay. Yeah, well, when it was a school, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Frank has it right, and actually, Mayor Jordan, I'm glad you mentioned Bob Zugby, because Tom and Tom White, who of course was on the council, and Bob at that point, really were the major proponents of having this other outlet for the community, so that people in the community kind of could share with the entire community about the different activities that are going on. Frank's done a very nice job in terms of describing the variety of things that we do cover. And, you know, thanks to John, who's I think is probably at about ninety-seven percent of a lot of the programs that are on and so forth. Anything that you see on Gate that is from Greenbelt, from the New Deal Cafe, more than likely behind the microphones and the camera is going to be John. I mean, everybody here contributes a great deal, and all from that same commitment. And you could tell it also from the originators of Tom and Bob, that there was a real commitment to cover the community and have more people. We have a great newspaper, great tradition, and I think we are trying to do the same kinds of things so that people can see, they can, you know, read about like an activity in the recreation department, and they can see, you know, what's going on. So, you know, it brings people closer together as a community.
See, you mentioned Bob Zugby and Tom White. Tom White was on council for a long time as Mayor Pro Tem. He's active in the National League of Cities. And were you one of the original board members, or?
Bob, I think, was the original board, and I came on when I was at a council meeting, and I came out in the parking lot, and Eunice Coxon, if anybody knows that name, from the sixties and the seventies and the eighties, and I was coming from another meeting, and she said, Conrad, you're not doing anything. I mean, you ran for the council, you didn't win, so what are you doing? And she said, why don't you come to our Greenbelt Access TV board meeting? And that was, it was in December of nineteen seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine?
December of seventy-nine.
Oh, yeah.
But Bob and Tom actually were there a few years prior to that.
I see. You've got that distinctive Gate polo shirt on as well. Very impressive.
Yes, and we had the French version. The French version is pronounced gâté.
Gâté, okay. Hey, so Frank, you mentioned PEG funding, and that is public education grants. So the funding for this public access television came from the franchise agreement that was signed on to when Comcast and Verizon wanted to begin broadcasting cable TV to the community and throughout Prince George's County and throughout the state of Maryland. They had to enter into a franchise agreement. So they made these educational grants for public access and for just promoting and showing what goes on in the city.
Well, they don't do it out of the goodness of their hearts. What Congress passed was they charge a PEG fee, and if you have cable TV, you pay about three dollars and fifty cents for PEG. And what's happened with all the streaming services, so just to go back a second, what happens is that the city keeps one-third. It passes through the city, but it's from that three dollars and fifty cents from the cable fees, and we get two-thirds because we're the public access and the education. And that was the agreement that was created. So actually, the city has never financed us at all. We were very happy to get an offer funding, you know, from you guys, because we, well, we'll get into, you know, our finances in a little bit, but that was always what set us up and what maintained us. In the beginning, it was well over two hundred thousand a year. And as cable revenues dropped, as, you know, more people cut the cord with cable because industry is changing, it's dropped to, I think, almost just a little bit north of one hundred thousand. So we've lost quite a bit of that funding. Now, we do sell products. We have the Utopia Film Festival. We make a little out of that. We do a lot of classes, and we make a little out of that. We're trying to do other things, teach in schools, more of that. If Silky were here, she'd charm in with that one, because we're working with her to get into the Spring Hill Lake Elementary. But that's our funding.
It's powerful. Collaboration between the city and Gate has been pretty much seamless. So just working together on broadcasting the Labor Day Festival, or the Greenbelt Concert Band, or just so many of the civic activities, it's sort of, we kind of work together, and so we have a memorandum of understanding that gets renewed every so often. But that's just a piece of paper, and really, you know, we're all kind of working together for the good of Greenbelt. Now, I understand that you have a video or something for us to watch or look at. Do you want to share that with us?
Sure, if you're ready for it. It's, what, how long is it, Sheila, two, three minutes? Two and a half minutes, pretty short. Just kind of an overthrow, we kind of threw together, overview, I mean, I don't know, just a little, just a taste of what we produce.
Let's see, if we can get the audio going on that. That's the Greenbelt Orchestra narrating the, what's that?
And it's not showing on the Zoom screen either.
It has audio, so. Should be running.
Let's try that again. Who's that? There you go. That might help.
Actually unable to unmute it, because if we unmute, it will cause feedback.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we can send it to everyone.
We don't even need the words. I can just, there's Rick Gordon there, just telling a story on its own without the words. Unless you guys want to narrate.
Well, this guy, I think he was talking about, please, now, you have to vote for me because... Now, this was the USCIS ceremony that, so, been going since two thousand nine, I believe. Sorry about the, I don't know, no audio.
Yeah, but what the video really shows is just the reach and the wide variety of activities that you cover, and it's really very impressive, the amount of work and time that goes into making video productions. So watching these, that's one piece of it. Another piece is the educational, the teaching people how to make videos and whatnot, and that's the educational piece. So it's like two balanced sides. One is just covering events, the other is actually enabling people to take advantage of video technology. So you want to talk about the membership and how, and with these videos, how, what do you do with all those videos? I mean, you've been around for years and years and years, so the Gate archives must be a treasure trove of information and just a reflection of everything that happens in the city over time. And Sheila, you're the executive director, and you're kind of new on the scene here. It's been about, what, a year and a half, two years?
Year and a half.
Yeah, so do you want to talk about the operations a little bit?
Sure, what would you like to know?
Well, what are the hours and what, how do you, if I want to learn how to make a video, what do I need to do? Do I have to sign, do I have to be a Greenbelt resident? Do I have to sign up? Are there classes available?
Yeah, our hours are eleven to seven, Monday through Friday. If you're interested in learning how to make a film, or learn how to animate, or just use any of our equipment, you can sign up for a membership form. You can contact us on our website, greenbeltaccesstv.org. There is a link to our classes as well as our membership, so you can fill out either or, if you have any questions, you can call us at three oh one five oh seven six five eight one. And, yeah, so basically through those forms, you can fill out whether or not you want to take, say, a camera class, what kind of camera class, editing class, do you want to learn Premiere, do you want to learn DaVinci, do you want to learn Final Cut? And then we will kind of, you can select those hours on a calendar, and then we'll get back to you if that time slot works, and then we can work out a class to your request. But we are working on slowly implementing a class that will probably run weekly, just like editing open house workshop, you know, come in and learn how to edit if you want, Thursdays, five to seven.
Yeah, because I've got this idea for a film. I haven't really fleshed it out all the way, but it's sort of like War and Peace. It's like this epic thing, so.
Cool.
Would you help me with script development, or?
Sure, is it going to be feature length? You're talking like As Long As The Book, or?
Well, I'm working, trying to work it out. It's going to take a while, probably. So Jennifer and John, can you talk a little bit about, just, I know, John, you're out there with the camera out, actually, in the community, covering events. So, and Jennifer also, so if someone has an activity and they want to film it, what happens when someone comes to you and says, John, Jennifer, Sheila, Frank, I want to film this event?
Sometimes it's a matter of just checking out the news review, see what's coming up, or Facebook, activities at the New Deal are posted regularly, and Fonka events, and art receptions I like. And, but it's a matter of just keeping your eyes open and, but sometimes, yeah, people will approach me, and there was a discussion of the, of World War I and II effects on a European family. It had a discussion in the Golden Age Club, and a friend of mine approached me about it and said, would I shoot it for Gate and for the community? And I, of course. So that was back in June. But it's a matter of hearing about it, seeing it, or just being asked to do it.
And I'll say that we tend to partner with other nonprofit organizations in the community. Part of our mission is to create PSAs for local organizations that might not otherwise be able to afford that. So we're looking for organizations that need that kind of thing, that are looking to promote what they do. So one of my favorite things to see is, in that promo that we just saw, there was the Ruak storytimes that happen once a month, the bilingual storytime. And it was cool to go and to see how that was shot, shot by Sheila, and then the way that it's been able to be used to encourage other people to come, to document what's happening, to highlight maybe some fun ways that people might be able to utilize partnerships with the library, or services like, did you know you can get ASL translation through the library, which we use when we know we're going to have population that may need to be there at that storytime. So I personally am involved less on the event side of what we do at Gate, and more on the like, I like creating new productions as well. So I personally got involved at Gate because a friend was creating a children's television show, original programming here in Greenbelt, and I was like, that sounds really fun. I want to get involved with that, and I've been excited to see, especially since Sheila's been on, some of the newer programs, newer personalities like Doll, and, yeah, I love seeing that people can come to us and say, hey, I have this idea. I want to do War and Peace. You will probably be the only one that's going to watch it, but we'll help you.
Jennifer, did I hear you say that any nonprofit organization can come to Gate and produce a public service announcement that would be aired not only on Gate, but wherever they want to air it? Is that right?
Absolutely. They tell them to get in touch with Sheila, come up with an idea of the message, you know, how they want to present their mission, and it'll be highlighted to Greenbelt, but also to their audiences as a whole, which I think is exciting, especially.
Pro bono.
Yeah, pro bono, and that's what public access is about. Like, that really is, we need to be sharing information and highlighting what's going on in our communities.
Yeah, I mean, that's really powerful. It really is. So John, you mentioned Fonka, and I know there's an animation program, and I remember Barbara Simon was very, very involved with Gate for such a long time. And, I don't know, Mike McMullin, do you want to talk about the animation program or about anything with Barbara? You've been around for a pretty long time, Barbara Simon. Okay. Mr. President.
Mike, do you want to talk about Artomatic? That was a big deal. Sorry. Put you on the spot.
We're here in support of Gate, is that right, Mr.? And just as a citizen who's been involved with Gate since I moved here, which is thirty-six years ago, when I found out there was public access, for a few bucks, I could get my hands on thousands of dollars of equipment I bought in right away. And unfortunately, I've been that membership that just can't get rid of, because it's such a good deal. And so I guess we're here today to try to get more support. Is that our mission? Is that what we're, yeah? I mean, we, I think that we provide a service that could be, and it has been really valuable to the city, so the relationship has been one of like a clownfish and an enemy, I guess, you know? We could make it more formal and structured in a way that whoever's paying taxes could see this is what their money's going towards instead of just an open market. But the possibility that someone could come in and be the next filmmaker is still not above the possibility. In this area, in Greenbelt, it's so rich with creative children and adults, that being, giving someone, you know, like myself, a chance of making a movie with zero money and having at least fun doing it, and who knows? Maybe one of these kids will put us on the map. That's not really the relevance. The relevance is having the opportunity for people to grow, and that's hard to put a price tag on. But if we take it away, we take away an avenue for someone to express themselves, whether War and Peace, maybe you're the only one who watches it, very, very funny line, or it's about your own home stone garden, which, you know, I wouldn't watch, but it doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. What matters is that people can express themselves. And in this growing era that we're facing, that ability to express ourselves is going to become very, very valuable. And things like open mic and public access are going to be so incredibly valuable and threatening to a larger force that's coming upon us. I can't stress how important supporting public access can be. I don't know, I got off, way carried off on something else here. Anyway, thank you.
It's well said.
Mike, tell us a little bit about Artomatic. But thank you, that was great.
Well, Artomatic involves several Greenbelt artists, by the way. That was a kind of a nice thing to see, how many Greenbelters are represented. Artomatic is the single largest art festival in DC, and it's like a gypsy program. We take over a building that a building owner wants to have put on the market. So in this case, it was a building in northwest DC at the corner of M Street and Twenty-First. Nice old building, eight floors, completely empty for the last five years, so the owner's like begging us to come in and throw a party. So we threw a seven-week-long party with nine hundred artists. We had two movie theaters, three bars, three places where there was live music, thousands of artwork, dance exhibits, all this stuff. And, but the nice thing was, we had so many Greenbelters there, and yours truly hooked up a time-lapse photography and videotaped seven weeks of people painting. So at some point, I'll probably share that with the community. But on another note, I will be out here painting for Labor Day with canvas and having people paint and express themselves. So it would be an honor if you guys would come and add a mark in that process, and maybe in the process, we do a little, what do they call it, photo op of you guys out in the public being creative, you know?
Thank you, thank you. Your passion comes through so clearly. Artomatic, I just love that. I was there, I've been going for the past ten or fifteen years. It's a great thing. But that creativity, being able to come in and produce, but, you know, talking about the support and whatnot, that's not going anywhere. In fact, we just recently signed an MOU with Gate, I guess it was in December. And I don't, Mr. Samorron, do you want to talk a little bit about the intense negotiations, the back and forth that we went through to come to, to get something etched in paper that would last for the next century?
Frank's a tough negotiator. So we kept the MOU almost entirely as it is, or as it was in twenty nineteen. I think we updated some dates, and I don't think we changed anything else.
No, five years ago, the MOU was signed. I wasn't part of it. Bob Zugby was president at the time, and he signed it with Mike McLaughlin, who was general manager of the city at the time. And basically, what it was, was you guys started charging both the, everybody pays rent, not everybody pays rent over the community center, but we had been not paying rent and providing services. So they, what they did was formalize it, you know, basically, things like Labor Day Festival, the city would film maybe half the events, and we would film the other half the events. If you read the, if you read the terms of it, it included all sorts of city functions and cultural functions in town. So, you know, we did that, and what happened five years ago, because there was change in ownership and change in, and it called for us billing you guys. Now, again, we've never charged the city anything, but in the MOU, it calls for us to be paid for what we do, but, and then we got into, well, what is it that we want to have you do? And so that's where we were with that. Now, the cap on it was our rent, you know, so it wasn't a huge portion of money. The city has increased our rent over those five years for about, I guess, about six years now, but proportionally, so we're talking about six grand a year that we pay you guys in rent. And, you know, so again, the agreement in the MOU is basically a memorandum of understanding that we would produce stuff that the city could run on its channel or use for whatever it wanted to, and we would be compensated for it. So that's where we were.
Basically, it's just codifying the practice, you know, working together, so you've got the space. You, for years, have helped us to cover some of the most important events in Greenbelt. And, you know, as a nonprofit organization, just fundraising, being able to survive through memberships, through the PEG grants, and covering these events, which is sort of like contracts, and that's the way a lot of nonprofits tend to operate. So we are here for you, and, you know, we're just glad to be able to sit down and talk. Yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, so it looked like in the materials that, so it works out to about twenty, twenty events a year. How, if at that rate? I mean, it seems like, so, you know, that five a quarter, which doesn't seem like actually a lot over the course of that. Do you, how many more, how do you determine which ones are ones you might have covered anyway, or which ones are the ones that are sort of the ones you're covering for the city?
Well, the city, I mean, Shandrea's been here, what, two, three years? Well, the city, I mean, Shandry has been here, what, two, three years? And I've been on board since Bob retired. Bob, I invited him here tonight, but he's getting a knee replacement, so he's hobbling around on a walker, so he can't get out much. And he would have maybe explained a little bit better. But at the time, it was fairly specific in some ways and then not specific in other ways, you know? What is it? And who is it from the city that asked us to do something? For example, Chris Cherry has had us do every one of the summer camps. We did all the Cookie Caper productions. We did a lot of the circus camp, you name it. We've done that for years. We...
Festival.
And Labor Day and all sorts of stuff. You know, we shared a little platform with your city, James, you know, the city, your employee, and filmed that Halloween thing with the big, you name it, we film it. And a lot of what, we didn't really see the whole production, but I can kind of rattle off all what we've been doing, you know? Everything from the pooch plunge to the, you know, the business conference and a bunch of promos that Kevin Simpson wanted on the business conference. So, and we do that. And that is, you know, stuff that you could run and we run, you know? And, you know, you get a great exposure, and we do too. We have about, what, 300, maybe 250 maybe members on our mailing list? And we got a, was it a 40% opening rate? And you, Hosway had told me that your city letter get a 60% opening rate. That's a, you know, the more people cut cable and don't schedule, don't have the time to watch a scheduled program. I mean, right now, we're running Democracy Now!, or whatever we're running. And how many of us are not too busy to just sit and watch TV? And then not only that, there's a million things on TV. So that's a better way, a direct mail with a link. So what we've been doing is links for our new productions. And, you know, you guys can do that too. We really would love to share, you know, to get our work out there. And because we're telling Greenbelt's story, you know? And, you know, you can only tell so much, but that's what we're here for. That's why we were created, you know, to tell Greenbelt's story.
But again, so it seems like, from your perspective, the way it's working with that balance of the rent cost on one side, but then sort of keeping track of the things you're doing on the other side and sort of balancing that out is working, is working all right?
Well, we haven't really utilized it yet. We haven't, I mean, COVID came along. It didn't happen initially because of transition at Gate, then COVID came along, and then we decided to revive it. So we're still working on reviving it, you know? And of course, we've had this other issue come up with the dwindling, which we've seen happening since I, I was treasurer six years ago, and I could see, huh, you know, the bar graph on cable. But, you know, good news on that, there may be some help from bills. Hosway and I were talking yesterday about how Massachusetts PEG, which is very strong, that's probably the strongest place in the country besides maybe California, for PEG stations. And they passed the bill that streaming services could be taxed as well. So, yeah, so that's where our funding comes from, you know? I mean, that's, was the intent of Congress and, you know? Hopefully, we'll have a good Congress come November.
Just lay your priorities.
Yeah, well, that is, that is, I feel like that was on some list that I saw. I don't think, not the final list, but on...
Yeah, it was on the list. I advocated for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in any event, that's what we would like to see is our, you know, being compensated and you guys using our stuff. That's what we would like to see and be a little bit more, maybe formalized, you know, with who wants it done and, you know, what's useful to you guys, you know? Because, you know, we could, we could run a show of this work session here. And we've had, actually filmed some of your work sessions, you know? Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, so in the future, you know, I just see closer collaboration and more, maybe more contracts to actually formally help the city pay certain content or things that we, you know, we're limited by our resources. So by kind of working together, I think it creates a really, really good synergy. Hey, do you have any way with metrics of figuring out how many people are tuned in?
Not to the TV, not to the internet, but to our email, yes. And again, we had a 40% opening rate on our email, on our direct mail to our members and to others that are on our mailing list. And that includes links to current productions, you know? A little while ago, you had mentioned about animation, and I just wanted to add something that we've, George Koschel has been with us since the very beginning. When it was first started, Shel Forstein, who, you know, had been a longtime TV guy, and he died within the first year, unfortunately, but wonderful guy is, and he said, well, what can we do for the kids? And that's when the animation program started. It's still very successful. We're the only animation instructor in the county. The school, you know, Northwestern is the film school, and they don't do animation, you know? So we're trying to get our program more into the schools. We did a pilot program at Eleanor Roosevelt a couple of years ago. We're, you know, working on that. But we also, our kids, you know, we've been in almost 300 film festivals around the world, our kids' productions. And one, the one I, I'd love to mention, Day in the Life of a Pig, was a little girl that made that. And that thing has won like 90 awards, awards, all around the world. I mean, so, you know, this puts Greenbelt on the map. We are an extremely unique progressive city. We are a model city, and we still are after Roosevelt built 100 of us, and we were the most, 98 actually, green towns and that. And we were the most evolved. And we got a lot to brag about to the world.
I just wanted to answer, answer your question about the links, so, or about like metrics. So because we've been putting our, it's hard to see who's tuned into the cable, but we are able to see how many views we have on our links with YouTube, which is pretty much every, any content that we create gets put out on YouTube. We've been tracking that more efficiently as a board and using it, I think, to really make adjustments. And our animation program, the exciting thing about that is we're able to see where people are tuning in. So these kids are able to see like, oh, cool, somebody from Iceland watched my video, or like those kind of things that we can watch, like as the films go to the different, to the different festivals around the world, we can kind of watch the metrics change. So that is, that's a great question.
And that's been a point of frustration for the city as well. We haven't really been able to get very good metrics on what happens on Comcast and Verizon. But now that we have shifted to YouTube and Facebook, we can see exactly what's going on. Amy, please.
Just speaking of collaboration, I wanted to call out another way that you guys had collaborated, which was by bringing on a member of staff through the Learn to Earn program. So if you guys wanted to say anything additional about that, how that transition went, or if not, and then I have two questions.
Yeah, so as part of the Learn to Earn program, we hired, there were two kids that wanted to do video production, but we could only take on one with our budget. So we took on a young kid, his name is Cameron Thorpe. He is about to start his senior year, and he has a little bit of experience shooting just sports games for Eleanor Roosevelt. They're all Roosevelt students. And so he joined us in June. We have had a lot of fun. He's been a lot of help with our summer camps. He loves kids, he's great energy, and it's kind of nice teaching, also difficult, teaching him to, you know, really get work ethic and get in there and stay motivated and also work on his craft and hone it. It's been fun, though.
That's fantastic.
So my two questions were, the first was outreach is always an issue, and I know you guys are limited by your location, and you're working on an MOU with Spring Hill Lake. But I guess what else are you doing slash what else could the city help you do to get the word out about your classes outside of, you know, Center Greenbelt, where they might see you out and about all the time?
So we've been talking a lot about the concept of a street team. As you all know, working with school-aged people is kind of tricky business, so we're being cautious about how we approach that. But we really have been trying to find ways to both put out more diverse content that might go to other places, and also just looking at working with a pool of more diverse, you know, kind of reading younger, people who might want to use the, you know, the exuberance and like the skills kind of like Cameron has to bring this to a different audience.
And then my last point was kind of going all the way back to the MOU, not trying to upset that at all. But just as we look forward to the next one, I was doing some quick math in my head, and at 20 events for essentially your rent, that's only about $400 per event that you guys are getting paid to film with multiple people and multiple cameras and then edit and put it out. So just making sure that as much as we can, while still making sure we keep it nimble enough that we're all working with each other collaboratively, just to nail down those details and perhaps put in a fee schedule so that as leadership changes, things can stay continuous and everyone's taken care of.
I'm not going anywhere. So you just talked about interns and working with youth. Can you, you probably worked with hundreds, if not thousands, of young people in the office as interns, formally or informally?
In my year and a half, actually Cameron is our first, like, young, younger person. We did have a college intern when I first started, but he left shortly after Phoebe did. I think he's just been busy with school, but, yeah.
A lot of the youth that come through our program come through the animation classes and the homeschool program, and then we do the camps. So our intern program is very young and building. And if you, I think the new programs here in the city have really helped us figure out how to make that work, because it really is like a whole lot of different things for us to figure out at once.
I forgot about Leila, she only works Fridays, so.
On COVID also, I think I forgot that, yeah, we were all kind of out of the office.
Yeah, we were locked down. No, Malia would hire interns all the time. We had, I remember that she called them the whiz kids, and they were really smart. I mean, they're both Bobby Candy's son, and there was another, another one. But just, Chuck, just going back to that metrics thing, one of the productions that stands out in my mind is the Step Club, when they won the national championship, and they've won it a number of years. But when we put out that YouTube, we got about 2,500 hits right away because it's a big club, right? And everybody's grandmother and grandfather wants to watch their kid winning their big thing. And, you know, so the more, the more the merrier is what we get.
Yeah, and on the flip side, with youth, with some of our older residents and clubs that the service are made up of older people, sometimes the technology is a little bit daunting. So the coverage that you provide for the Golden Age Club and for various events is really, really important. Hey, Mr. Hurley, did you have a question or a comment? Please.
Looks like your top-viewed video is Dem Raider Boys from six years ago, 7.4,000 on your YouTube channel, just incidentally.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, there are so many different organizations in town. And there is the annual program where there's a dinner or an appreciation of what those organizations do. But a lot of the organizations are having problems with getting more people, or at least enough people, to keep the organizations going. And one of the things that we've talked about to some degree, and you can see what's been done from the presentation earlier, but there are, and I remember talking to the city manager about the number of organizations that the city has that helps to contribute towards. And so this is something also where Gate can be of assistance to the city as well as the 25,000 Greenbelters, so that the more coverage we can provide about what those organizations are doing, at least potentially can provide an incentive for more people because they're increasingly aware of what the opportunities are to help those organizations. Because I think it's, is it like, what, 99 organizations? That there are, it's a massive number. It's in that, it's in that, that close to 99 or so. And like if you go to like the Little League programs and the football, Little League actually has, every now and then, it's really like, like a rainbow in terms of going up and down. And if we want these organizations to be able to still serve the kids, the adults, the older folks, then Gate can be a key ingredient of making that happen. And because of the qualified and the really, really just, I mean, I'm honored to be part of Gate, the skills and the knowledge. And the thing is, is that each year, each six months, maybe even more frequently than that, you know, our staff is always on the lookout for new ways to do things. And so we can be basically a helpful ingredient in terms of building more involvement, more participation. Because I think, what is it, do we have maybe, maybe 35, maybe 45 organizations that will come to that annual program of, and the dinner of appreciation? But a lot of them, and when you talk to them, worthwhile causes that they all provide, a lot of them are, a lot of them could use some help. And Gate, I think we can help to provide that assistance. So I don't want you to forget that as well.
Thank you, thank you. So you've talked about a lot of collaborations. Are there some active partnerships outside of the City of Greenbelt that you're pursuing or that you've been working on the past year or two? Like long-term collaborations?
What were you gonna say?
Okay, no, I was just gonna mention, we do run Dave Zarren's Science Bowl every day, and I have contacted to try to get PG News. You know, there's a real void in local, in Prince George's County News, and it's really important to Greenbelt. You know, and I know you've hired a company to sort of prize us when they bring something up. I mean, my wife worked for the PG Journal for many years, you know, and she would cover the State House, and she covered the county council, you know? And when that folded, it left a big void. That's something Gate can be doing, you know? And even, I was kind of disappointed that even the county cable news is not really very as thorough as it could be. So that, you know, I'd love to stick a camera at all those guys, and when they start, you know, selling us down the river to the developers, we'd have it there on camera, you know? It's a big deal. You know, it's that democracy dies in darkness thing that, you know, unfortunately, the Washington Post without getting on the soapbox, but oh my goodness. So anyway, we can, we can hopefully fill that void. We had an ACM conference I went to, you know, for the local PEG stations. ACM is Alliance for Community Media, and we're a member, yeah, we're a member of that. That does represent, all the 1,700 stations around the country represents about a fourth, you know, that are active members. So, but we talked about coordinating efforts for regional coverage. I'm sorry, Jenny?
Counselor, please.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to rush you along. Have, but just on that point, have you guys ever partnered with the University of Maryland on any, any efforts like that? Because they do have a journalism program, broadcast journalism program. I mean, I would think that, I mean, I was a journalism student there, they all want to be on camera. It's like, they're waiting for their moment, you know?
Yeah, we actually just filmed, I filmed, well, it was back in the winter, but I filmed a conference that they did, that they gave about local journalism, exactly that, and we've run it on our channel.
I want to highlight that we have the partnership with the cinema where we share what's showing. That's an ongoing thing that we're talking about, different ways that we can really highlight that and do more. We did a really awesome puppet, was it like shadow puppetry? What was the thing that we did with the Jurassic World?
Oh, that was Ally's claymation workshop. So people were, kids were putting Play-Doh on individual frames of an animation, and Ally took pictures of them, put them all together, made a whole collaborative.
And do that for adults, I mean, I was a little...
You're welcome.
I wanted to do claymation.
Yeah.
Adults do it too, you'd be surprised.
Yep, and so there's exciting, I think there's more exciting things like that working. I know that I've been witness to some exciting conversations. As you all know, like, things take time, and we're looking for funding for things. But the nice thing about that Lost World thing was that it was piggybacked with the MSAC grant that they're getting there for the silent film. So it was very much like pulling in an event that would be into, appealing to a lot of different people. The other partnership I wanted to highlight is that we're working with Humboldt County... The other partnership I wanted to highlight is that we're working with Humboldt County Public Access Television where they're, the television show that I'm on, Tea Fairy and Friends, Storytime and Adventures, that actually in its most recent two seasons has been a collaboration between people there in Humboldt County that do children's programming there and us here because Tanya moved to California. So when she moved, she took our show and at least the first season, I think, has been, the agreements have been released, they have been aired in California. So I think that that's exciting. Personally, I'm championing us working with other, other public access because that's where a lot of the grant money is as well. And a lot of just sharing information, like we have to work together if this is gonna survive, so.
They're great collaborations. It's great to hear about that.
Danielle?
So if you were to, next year's work session, you came back and you were here and we asked, you know, if there was one or two things that you were most proud of, what would be maybe one or two goals that you'd like to achieve this year? And so, because you sound like you're doing an incredible amount of great work. So is there like one focus area or one thing that you're like, yes?
With the, with the election coming up, thinking, you know, there'll be another opportunity as we did four years ago, to set up, you know, imaginary soapbox at the farmer's market and invite people to give their impressions of the upcoming election. And as I said, we did that four years ago and we got a pretty good turnout with that. People talked about a number of issues. And I'm sure there are more issues to talk about for this, for this election cycle. So that's one thing.
As we work to expand our animation program and education just in general, I'm hoping we can at least double our amount of class attendees within the next year. Also be more communicative with the city as well. I know Chandria and I, we kind of fell out of keeping in touch with events that are coming up, who's shooting that? And that's something I would like to get back on. And yeah, I think that is mostly it, original programming as well, original content. Those are my goals and ambitions and making the studio look nicer. You guys have seen it.
Can I report to you?
Yeah. Do you, do you do like a full summer camp program that's all animation? Or is it just sort of bits and pieces of other, of the camps?
It's been strange this year. So we are doing a Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday schedule with the Recreation Department, Kids Creative Camp, or Creative Kids Camp. So I took sessions two and three, which was, I'd see them Tuesday, Thursdays and they would come in and, you know, we're gonna make a short video. We're gonna do Mad Libs script, you know, news broadcast. And Ally had taken sessions one and four, so that's, you know, she's doing her claymation thing. So it's 40-minute sessions for each group of kids. So it's kind of hard to get in actually something, you know, tenable, but in terms of education.
They at least learn how to do it, even if they may not be able to produce a very long. Can't do a lot of claymation in 40 minutes.
Yeah, but they're definitely getting their hands on the cameras, so.
The other thing I was going to comment on is that also sort of the opposite direction from University of Maryland, there's a lot of video producers and video production happening up at Goddard and, and different types of animation, not claymation animation. So if that's something, I know some of the folks who are in those, who are in that division doing like the scientific visualization studio and might, if there might be some expertise sharing, I think that could be, that could be an interesting connection as well. Sort of a completely different side from the journalism school, from the broadcast journalism school. But NASA recently announced they're actually sort of doing away with NASA TV as it was. It's gonna be NASA Plus, which is an on-demand, on-demand as everyone's going. So like the streaming of NASA TV where you can go and, you know, watch views from the International Space Station for hours on end. It's, it's changing format to this new NASA Plus thing that I just learned about recently. I think officially sort of the end of the month is when they're completely transitioning over. But you can see NASA Plus and see lots of great programming on there.
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna make it a note, their animations, maybe we can.
Yeah, so it's things like, you know, satellite beauty passes and, I mean, data visualizations as well, but there's, there's more of some other things than you would think of. And actually, I should send you, one of my favorite videos from the project I used to work on was a Global Precipitation Measurement Mission, was actually they got a bunch of Goddard folks outside one of the buildings and it's like a low, low-budget things like they have, they're, it's a precipitation mission, so they're people with umbrellas and they made like paper, papier-mache mountains to talk about rainfall and stuff. And it's, you know, it is, it's a NASA video, but it's very, but it looks like something that kids could do themselves. And so I like to use it as an example with students is like that was, and it conveys the message and it's fun. And it's, even though it's not the splashiest or the, like necessarily the shiniest of all the NASA videos, it is still a pretty good one.
Yeah, please send that over.
I will do that.
Hey, so on the funding piece and grants, how do you manage seeking grants? Is there someone, Sheila, do you, do you do that all or?
Yes.
Well, maybe that's something, you know, we have, the city has a grant writer. So maybe there will be occasions when we might be able to, to share some information. I don't know, I think we could probably do that from time to time.
Any tips or resources would be greatly appreciated. I'm very new at this.
And we, we did talk about the M-word before, membership. So what does it mean to be a member of Gate and how do you sign up?
Being a member means getting to kind of come into the studio whenever you want during operation hours. You can work on your projects there. We have had a woman who's been coming in every single day this summer, just editing away at a video project she has, actually numerous video projects. She's very sweet. Usually people don't utilize the office that much, but it is coming in and getting the hands-on help to work on your individual projects and being able to run out the equipment. And also being in the know, we send out newsletters to our members. We have an annual membership meeting every March and they are welcome to come to that. They seldom do, but they should.
It's only $25?
25 for residents and 50 for non-residents. However, we have like a four cities agreement, so I think it is Berwyn Heights, College Park, somewhere else.
The information is on the website, yes.
What's that website?
GreenbeltaccessTV.org.
Okay. Let's see, I think we'll take some questions from the public. Is there anybody online?
You.
Please, please go ahead.
Now, there's two particular initiatives that we're talking internally at the request of our residents. One is, we've had several residents request portable camera and audio equipment for meetings, meetings that they want to record and they're not necessarily city public meetings. There are other meetings that they're having that would be of value to the community. I know you loaned out equipment, the film camera. Do you have any plans for a portable camera unit, like an owl or something that can be used for meetings for, either for your members or residents? And we ask, so we're, we're talking internally, how do we fulfill that demand? And we're thinking of buying the equipment that we'll lend out. And, but we have our own limitations that some constituents will require training that we may not have the resources to provide the training.
See, you gotta join before you can check out equipment. But do you have organizations that you come in, they, they want to record their meetings, you train them and then they can actually rent out a camera or?
Yeah, they can register to take a camera class. Completing the camera class will certify you and then you are able to be loaned out a camera.
But to clarify, we don't currently have any like telecommunications device. I think that's a great idea. We'll probably discuss it when we're, you know, in our next board meeting. But yeah, they can, they can learn how to record it themselves. And, but a note is that if you record, if you borrow the equipment, the, it's to be used expressly for content that can be aired on our, right? It has to be able to be aired on Greenbelt Access. So if you wanted to, one group that utilizes this really well is the Eleanor Roosevelt Democratic Club. They'll put in requests. I've gone and filmed myself. I'm sure you've filmed there as well. And they'll put in their quest that they want to make their meeting public and will come and fulfill that need and, and make it public. But if they want to take things from us, the way that things are written in our bylaws and everything, it needs to be able to be made public. So I would say that if they are looking for something to be a private, something to, you know, broadcast internally, maybe that's something that might be better suited to a library situation or the maker space. But I love this idea. My club needs it too.
Probably comes up with religious organizations sometimes and you're able to work with them?
I haven't had too many religious shoots. I did film one back in June. It was this interfaith conversation about pilgrimage and faith. They just asked if I wanted to come out and shoot it.
It's a little different than covering a church service, I suppose.
Yeah, well, we don't have the, currently we have Telview as our broadcast server. I think you guys have Castis, correct?
Well, no, we have, I want Castis.
We do too.
Yeah, we want, yeah.
So to answer that question about religious services, I would say it would need to be kind of on a case-by-case basis. As a 501(c)(3), we cannot endorse any political candidates, any one religion, anything of that nature. So it becomes more of a, if you have an event or a special thing that you want us to share with the community, that is more of our role.
Yeah, currently we can't live broadcast anything at this time yet.
Sorry, Mr. Samurai, I sort of interrupted you. Please go ahead.
No, thank you. So that, so I think more conversation needs to happen of that. There's constituents that want that technology and access and it doesn't make sense for them to buy an owl or something of that nature, but it could be shared resource. GHI is a good example. They have meetings regularly and it's streamed to their members. And, but it wouldn't necessarily be a publicly broadcast, just their, their members.
Would you do something like that on a contract? Like if they contracted with you to, to cover something and paid some sort of a stipend?
We could, we could.
As it is a board, I think it's something we're open to, case-by-case basis, right?
Are we able to as a nonprofit?
Yeah, yeah, we are able to. We can, we can sell services like that.
Yeah, I think it's written, I saw it written in our, that we can sell services, but that's a separate thing than us broadcasting. Like having it be part of the equipment rental agreement is a different thing. Maybe we could come up with a different program, but yeah, let's discuss that.
Well, for commercial use, we would charge for the rental of the equipment. That's for commercial use, so. Like let's say somebody wanted to shoot a wedding or something, they would pay for the, to rent the equipment. We don't just give it out for, you know, if you're shooting community events and, you know, it's stuff that we're gonna show on our station or you guys could show, yeah, then we would certainly provide the expertise and the equipment.
Excellent, excellent.
The second item that we've had requests for is a podcast room. Podcasts are awe-inspiring.
We want that too.
Okay. Right below us is what used to be where the GAKs, the, where their old costumes, right? And now it's being used somewhat and everybody's scrambling for space in the community center. But it's right below us. All we have to do is drop cables down and, you know, we would have a classroom and a broadcast booth, you name it. Would love to have it. I've visited other stations like Bowie and Laurel and, you know, your mouth waters. You know, you come to our place and it's okay, you know, but no, they got, they got the real deal.
That, I was at MML and I happened to be sitting with the Deputy City Manager for Laurel and she was bragging about the podcast room and how amazing it was and it's booked all the time. So we got a bit of, I got jealous of.
Oh, easy to do.
You guys could do it for sure, right? Do you have one?
We don't have one.
No.
No.
It's on our list.
Same, yeah. We have a, well, currently on our wish list right now, we do have a sound recording, like just, not inflatable, but you can just like pop it up and break it down, like sound booth. So you could just stand in there alone and record your own podcast, but yeah. Basically. Yeah, it's on our wish list for sure.
Okay, so I see those as opportunities and as we, we have those discussions internally, we'll be mindful of your interest in these initiatives.
Okay, question?
Bill Orleans, what I'm about to talk about, I've whined about in the past over the years. The suggestion was made earlier that since Gate's been around a long time, it probably has a very substantial archive of community events that it would have filmed or recorded digitally. And I'm guessing these days, everything is recorded digitally. But preceding my return to Greenbelt more than 20 years ago, there was a community forum presumably at the community center, although it might have been conceivably even here, in which the subject was ranked choice voting. And I was here one night for a council meeting and noted through the window that there was actually a recording playing on the city's channel that night, as it happens. I wouldn't have been able to watch it even if I was not a council because I don't know how to access the Greenbelt channel. But more importantly, that was filmed. And periodically, and I apologize, I'm blanking on her name, the woman who ran Gate for many years?
Malia, Malia Murray.
Yes. Whenever I had occasion to be on the second floor in the community center, I would stop by that steel shelf and go through boxes of old films that were collecting dust. And eventually I, I'm told they were discarded. I hope, since everything is digital these days, you're taking advantage of any old recordings of community events that you have and digitizing them so that they could be observed much easier than collecting dust on a steel shelf somewhere. But the thought occurred to me when the gentleman, who I don't know, sitting to the left of Mr. Hurling spoke, he's been a member of Gate for a long time. And maybe there are other longtime members of Gate who might have a copy of old films of community events recorded by Gate. And I don't know that there's an index, but it's conceivable still at this late date that there might be a copy of that recording available to Gate. And it would be great, since the subject of ranked choice voting is still current and current for Greenbelt Council, it would be great for an opportunity to see that forum. It included among others Bob Auerbach and, who's a Greenbeller, included others who were not Greenbellers, I, I'm told. I, as I say, I wasn't back to town yet, but. So my question is this, is it possible that Gate could, among its members, especially its older members, find out if a copy of that particular old recording still exists? And if you could digitize it and maybe show it again, either on Greenbelt's channel or maybe at a Greenbelt Council meeting when we're talking about amending our charter, council would have the benefit of seeing that debate. Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely would be interested in finding any old footage if people are interested in looking at it. We have a lot of DVDs. We might have other media, perhaps tapes.
Yeah, you know, there hasn't been catalogued, but yeah, that's certainly possible.
Can you send an email with that request to, to the station? Will you please send an email to the station with that, with, with the particular requested, like what you're requesting, just so that we have, we can start a dialogue that way?
Well, I don't send very many emails, but I'll speak to one of you.
Sure.
Yeah, actually, that's why I brought the topic up, you know, I'm, you must have an amazing archive of materials, videos over the years. But, you know, cataloguing them is a challenge. I had a internship when I was in college where I was cataloguing a really large collection of cassette tapes that a journalist had, had made over the course of 20 years. And this was quite some time ago. But you know, there are resources. We have a pretty close relationship with the university and sometimes there are interns and students in the library school that, that are interested in archives. And, you know, it's very, very labor-intensive to actually look at all of these videos and describe what's on them and then codify them somehow. But that would be a really valuable thing to do. Mr. Hurling, and we're gonna wrap up in a few minutes. Mr. Hurling, please.
Actually, this is something that I could bring up at the next Gate board meeting. But it's interesting what Bill brought up because there were some pieces of really interesting work that Gate did going back 20-plus years ago. And because the form in which one would be able to see that work is now outdated, is there a way to be able to convert what has, was done 25-whatever years ago? Because Gate has been around for a long time. So that then they could be viewable, you know, for the, for the public. Is, that probably is a greater challenge than I'm thinking about. But is that something that could be something? And maybe there'll be some other folks, other organizations that could help with that effort. Because I know there was only 24 hours in a day to do all the stuff that Gate does. But that way you can go back and you say, gee, what did the city say or what did? Or what did, you know, what was the performance, be it athletic or be it the arts, whatever it might be? Because you can learn, I know it's an obvious statement, but you can learn a lot from looking at pieces of our history and be able to say, okay, that's, that was applicable then, but now, you know, there were different rules and regulations. Is there a way to convert some of the, the old tapes that we, we have? And I know also that, that there are times, there's only, that's another thing that a lot of folks don't appreciate and don't realize. There's only a limited amount of space in terms of all the things that are stored at Greenbelt Access TV. So sometimes some of this stuff after a period of time might not last forever. But anyway, technically, I guess I'm asking, is that something that, that Gate can help make happen?
Well, we have a store, storage unit with lots of old boxes in it. So anytime you want to come digging through it, I'll be glad to show you where it is and let you.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the.
Yeah, no, it's possible. You can convert all, yeah, you can convert all DVDs and, you know, cassettes and all that stuff. They can be converted to digitize, for sure.
It sounds like a Greenbelt Community Foundation grant proposal.
Historic preservation, I think there's a lot of grant possibilities that we can talk about. I think that this is something that the museum might be interested, that the cinema, cinema may be interested in with some of their preservation things. We will definitely touch base on that at the meeting, our next meeting, and I'm happy to kind of help.
Things today, that are done today, that are filmed by Gate. You know, in 20 years, people might want to say, you know, how did the city deal with such and such a problem? Or how did they improve the ball fields, whatever? So I guess at least potentially, it's something that could be made possible.
It's, it's a, you know, long involved process going through these old materials, figuring out how to describe them, cataloging them and converting them. But yeah, it's powerful to have that sort of an archive. So I think, Jennifer, I think you're right on point with the museum, the cinema, and just maybe the university, maybe a grant to get a couple of people working on that. It'd be really valuable.
I just want to say from the public information standpoint, we are in that same predicament as well. And when I came on board, there were boxes and boxes of VHS tapes from previous years and also boxes and boxes of pictures. So one day, when I have the opportunity, you know, to go through those things and, you know, put them in the proper storage, I would love to do that, and maybe we can collaborate on that effort as well.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you. One more question, Mr. McMullin.
I couldn't help but notice that at least two board members hinted to sort of a reverse sticker shock at our price for doing productions, particularly you, Amy, you, you sort of hinted at like, that's all it costs. I personally believe we overpriced ourself. And so I, I want us to, I, I don't, I don't expect answers right now, but I'd like to readdress our value at what it would cost to produce a one hour, two hour, like the children's play. What does that cost for a company to come in? Certainly more than one month's rent. So if we look at that, I think we can cut our rent down by like 10 productions. If we, if we give you 10 productions a year, that should clear us on the rent, and then after that, we're, we're in the gravy. But while I'm here, and I'll make this really quick, I can't reiterate this strong enough, that the cable access is not invented to be a news station. It's not invented to be relevant. It is invented to be an access for public people to learn how to make media. So whether the media is relevant to the city or not makes no difference. The value is the, the availability for people to come in and express themselves. Now, if we can make 80% of the productions mean something to the city, that's great. But it really is not the core of what public access is about. And I want, I want to keep that in the forefront of our thoughts. We don't have to be relevant. We just have to be open.
Appreciate that. Well said. Mr. Javasi, do you want to take us home?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to answer Danielle's question, because she said, what's the goal? What would you like to see most? And I wore my Utopia Film Festival shirt, because that's what excites me the most about Gate. We put on, you know, we're right screening films right now, and we put on all these wonderful films from all around the world. And we just showed one at a Reelin' Meal, which were also, we produced six of the Reelin' Meals, called Saving Walden's World. And it's all, this main filmmaker went around, what's sustainable? How you can, how can you live sustainably? You know, and still have a world for our kids. That was the theme of the film. It was a very upbeat film, because he, he went to places that, you know, that can do that a lot better than we've been doing it. So it's stuff like that, and you meet the filmmakers, and you guys are all invited. It's our 20th anniversary. So we're going to do it up a little bit bigger than we usually, we, you know, but that's what excites me. I want to have a really smash festival, and all indications, we've got the films. And the filmmakers come from all over. You love it.
So what's the date on the Utopia Film Festival?
October 19th through the 22nd is the main part of the festival, but we do some other events between now and then as well.
It's going to be fantastic. So it'll be in the small screening room, the Arts Center. In this room, because it's really all over town, the Utopia Film Festival is such an event.
Even some here. We, we use this room for some of the Saturday night stuff, because we can't get the theater. But it's the big theater, big screen. We, we commandeer the New Deal Cafe. We blank out the, the windows, and we have our film studio, and it works out great. Everybody has a good time.
Definitely looking forward to that. Let's see, you have one more teeny tiny comment. Yes, please.
Having been in a situation where I needed to be in two places at the same time, what Frank just was indicating in terms of the Utopia Film Festival, if there's, if it's possible, and I know there's always competing needs for council to get in touch with the Maryland State, the Council of Governments, the, the.
Oh, CAG.
Yeah, so that the festival, the October program that takes place for the municipalities throughout the state, if we could avoid having an event, that conference at the same time that the festival takes place, that would make it possible for all of you then to be able to participate.
Does it conflict? We tried to avoid that. Does it conflict this year?
I think the National League of Cities Conference.
No, was it? I think it's the Maryland, MML, I think it, I think it did conflict maybe last year, but it's later. MML, the fall conference is, is in November this year, so there is no conflict. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we intentionally did that.
My priority would be at the Utopia Film Festival personally. Don't know about the rest of the council. Yes, Shondri?
Just a reminder, if you could just share the Utopia Film Festival information with me so that I can place it on our city calendar and send it out to the residents, so we can, you know, get a good turnout this year.
Yeah, can do.
Okay.
In case somebody decides to make the movie War and Peace, could we get a nomination process for the film festival as well? How do folks?
Got to Frank, you gotta do it.
We, we do that.
Wait for entries. Can I, you know, with my idea?
You, you can enter, but it goes through a screening process.
A few weeks, I think, before.
And we don't play favorites.
Go making abilities, Mayor Jordan.
Okay, and there's a question online. Let's see, Dr. Rosado, let me see if I can promote you. Dr. Rosado, are you there?
Yes, yes, I am. I'm sorry I joined late, but first of all, I want to thank Gate on behalf of the Greenbelt Black History and Culture Committee, as well as the PIA office. But Gate has been so helpful in, in enabling us to do PSAs and coming to film, videotape the programs that we have had and as, as, as well as helping us just support, with, with support. And the PIA office, they have been wonderful. They need more staff in helping us design our flyers, and I think they need to get, have a lot more assistance. Gate needs money, and I think they have, their staff, as small as it is, has done a yeoman's job for this city. So however we can support them, please, please do so. And that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you, and very well said, you know. I really appreciate this time that we spent together this evening. Of course, I, you know, I, I see you all around the city all the time. But to be able to sit down and really talk and sing the praises of, of Gate and to kind of reinforce our partnership and talk about what we can do to do more together is, is just really important. So, you know, on behalf of the city council, I just want to thank you for all you do. Well, thank you.
Thanks a lot, and we appreciate what you do too.
Thank you, Lois. That was so sweet. We're happy to do it.
Movie, though. I'm going to work on that.
That's a wonderful green belt. I haven't forgotten.
That's right. Okay, hey, so we're going to move on. We have a second half of the work session tonight. And really, it's not necessarily half a work session, but, you know, council has, has been wanting to talk about the scheduling of work sessions and meetings. And so I, I thought that we would carve out some time to actually formally do that for the next 45 minutes or so. Maybe a little bit less, maybe a little bit more. But I, I was wondering, I'd like to pull up the stakeholder schedule, and we can kind of look at the, the framework that we've been using over the past few years in determining how, who we talk to and how often we talk to them. So these work sessions, it really is a chance to meet with community stakeholders, advisory groups, and so on. And this framework that we've been using kind of breaks things down to folks that we talk to annually, every year, folks that we talk to every two years, people who we speak with maybe twice a year. And then there is a listing of meetings as needed. When, when a crisis or a new opportunity comes up, we'll schedule a work session. And finally, there's a category for newly elected or appointed officials being able to sit and speak with them a bit. So looking at this annual listing, there are several columns. And the columns to the right of the name of the organization, there's a column for when we have last spoken with these stakeholders. So council, in that annual category, or just looking at this framework, what do you think? I, I don't think that this new council has really sat down to talk about this or to think it through, but I'm open for suggestions. You know, just looking at the annual, biannual, twice a year, you can see that we're, I, I wouldn't say that we are far behind, but there, there are some organizations that we usually do talk with every year that we're, we need to kind of get around to speaking with these groups. Same thing with biennial. So, you know, I can read them off. Annual, the advisory group chair meeting, that's coming up next week. Franklin Park, we've met with them back in February. Center City HOAs, we talked with them in May. The attendance was light. But still, you know, I think these work sessions with the various residential organizations are important. So you have the Center City HOAs, you've got the Greenbelt East HOAs and condo associations. And that's kind of changed. We used to, until about three years ago, before COVID, we had an active Greenbelt East Advisory Coalition. They would actually send an agenda to us, and we would respond to their questions. Lately, since COVID, they're, they are not well organized. GHI, we've got a meeting coming up with GHI. When is that scheduled? Reschedule it. That'll be in September, probably. September, October. I see Greenbelt Station, I see Verde Apartments. We need to add Motiva to that list. We're overdue, speak with our school board member. I'd really like to sit down and talk with them. Unfortunately, you know, September might be a busy time. But, you know, I think it's really important to, to sit down with our school board member and, you know, talk about his thoughts and views on the, the situation in our various schools. Also to have him, to have Ace present at that, that meeting. State Highway, we just talked with State Highway at the Four Cities Meeting, and we've talked with them recently. We need to update the, the time on that. So council, what are you thinking? Should, are there other organizations we need to be talking to every year?
Well, I'm wondering if maybe it's also helpful to look at this in the frame of looking at our planning framework, because that's driving some of the things that we're hoping to prioritize. And that I know Mr. Samron is also looking at for the upcoming year, what we prioritized in the budget. Not to say that all of these topics are not important, but we also know that we have limited work sessions, and we need to try to be strategic about the things that we're covering. That's my first question point. The second thing is, is that for those that may, we may need to get sort of an update from, do all of them require a work session? Or there are some things that, you know, we just need to get a basic update? And are there other mechanisms in which we can do that? You know, not to say, again, that we don't want to, we want to connect with the community as best we can, but just knowing that there are just some limitations on time. So maybe we can also talk about what are other ways that we can connect with some of these organizations that may not be through a meeting? Or if there's even a combining meeting. I know we've done that in the past too. So doesn't necessarily have to be a meeting for every topic, if there are some topics that maybe go together that we have a work session for.
Well, yeah, I strongly agree that there are times when we can piggyback a couple of, of these sessions during the same night for a work session. I don't know, you know, I, I think just as far as gathering information from other ways, I suppose that is what we kind of do with meetings as needed. There's a whole list of stakeholders where we just, if there's an update, if something's coming up, then we would schedule a chance to speak with them face to face. With the residential communities, I think it's important to either have them here or go to where they are to just see who is there and, and make sure that the relationship is strong. Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Well, I would point out that, for example, the Greenbelt Station HOA annual meeting is coming up in September. So rather than having a separate meeting, because we don't tend to, for that one, we don't tend to have a lot of residents attend the work session. But we, it's usually the, the, the community manager and maybe a few of the board members. But we don't actually get a lot of residents to attend that. I mean, we actually had a pretty good number of residents on our community walk. So if the, I guess, if we think about the purpose, if, if the purpose of having these on an annual schedule is to make sure that we are checking in with those neighbors and those neighborhoods in, in, in a way that they get a chance to give us feedback and they get a, and we get a chance to hear, you know, what their issues are, then I'm not sure that a, I think we had more people on that community walk with the Greenbelt Police Department than we have ever had as a Greenbelt Station residents coming to, coming to a work session. So if, I, I think we should rethink what the point is. Maybe what it needs to be is we make sure we have an annual community walk in Greenbelt Station, rather than trying to get, or, or also just make sure that we're checking in on an annual basis with the community manager about what the issues are. Maybe it's right after the, the HOA annual meeting. We make sure that, that we, we get, hear from Marson, who's the community manager, about what things came up and get, you know, a written report to council about what council can do. That I think if we're looking for actual engagement from residents of these neighborhoods, I don't know that expecting them to come to a work session is actually going to get the engagement that we want. There may be exceptions to that. I think we often have a lot of people that come to the, to the GHI one. But we know that Greenbelt East, we haven't had a lot at previous ones. I mean, the Greenbelt Center HOAs, we didn't have, I mean, we had, what, three or four people? So we're just, if our purpose is to engage these communities, having them come to work sessions isn't necessarily doing that.
I think it depends. So I was really trying to be rather specific. Are there some of these that you'd just like to pull off the list?
Well, I think thinking of it as a annual, checking in to see, are there any issues? Do we need to have a work session? Or making sure we are at least annually figuring out some way to engage with these communities, but not necessarily through a work session.
Right, so another example of that might be like the Greenbelt Business Alliance. We've been, you know, we, they had an event. I think a lot of people were there. That was a way that we engaged with that organization. I actually think we probably do need a work session because there's a lot going on that we do need to talk about. But if there are events that some of these organizations are having, maybe that can be a way to leverage that.
So, you know, I hesitate to, you know, take the example of one year, even two years, for interacting with these groups and saying, well, it's just not worth it because we didn't have enough people show up. And also, I think there's an issue just about inclusivity as far as just making sure that mutually that that these organizations, entities feel that that we want to be engaged with them. And at the same time, making sure that all of council has the opportunity to to have FaceTime with these boards. And the GHI Board of Directors is a good example. I mean, there is a functioning board with about eight or nine people, and usually they have a decent turnout of residents. So I I I hear you and I get you. And I think, you know, in some cases, we we just really need to go there instead of being here. And traditionally with GHI, we have gone over to the building on Hamilton and talked with the board during their session. Unfortunately, I missed the 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 walk over Green Belt Station.
I think, you know, all these organizations are just not monolithic, right? So there's going to be ways that they communicate and engage differently. Because every single organization has a different culture. So I think it's about figuring out how they engage best and what works best for them, whether or not it's going to them, whether or not it's bringing them here, whether or not it's, you know, going to an event. I think that's the point, like, looking at each one individually and figuring out what is the best way to engage for that organization. It may not just be just a work session.
Yeah, I I agree with you. And so based on my experience, I sort of have a pretty good feel. Now, it's new for for some of you, but, you know, I'm open. So let's just look at the list, figure out, because September is an open book right now. We don't really have any work sessions scheduled in September, October going out.
I think GHI is doing their, is still doing all of their meetings virtually. I don't think they're doing any of their meetings in person still. So that could be one that could be a purely virtual meeting because that's the way GHI is doing their meetings. I yeah, I think, I think I would say, I would argue that Green Belt Station HOA and Verde Apartments, we actually, I I think the going to the neighborhood and doing a walkthrough worked very well with that. We had better attendance than we have for anything else. So I would argue that that one maybe is one that could be addressed that way. And I think we had at least three or four.
It was there.
Yeah, and I think there were at least three or four members of the of the of the HOA board there. I'm not sure we had as many. I don't know how well it was advertised to the Verde Apartments, although there were at least a couple people who I think were from the Verde there. But I don't think we've ever had any residents from from the Verde come to the work sessions, even when we had management come. I think we need to talk to some people from Green Belt East and figure out how to reach them.
So we do need to add Motiva on there. And we've been, a few of us have been over there and their their residents are interested. And we can, I think it's a, it's a good idea to actually go around to to visit folks where they are. Jenny?
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I think, you know, prior to sort of scheduling work sessions, if staff can sort of reach out and see, like, what are the issues? Because, you know, as Danielle was saying, and and I'm sorry, as Councilmember McKinnney was saying, Mayor Protam was saying, there was a great turnout on that community walk. And that's clearly because in Green Belt Station, public safety is top of mind for that community. So maybe there are other things that are top of mind, you know, in the Green Belt East HOAs, and we can shape the meeting around that, you know, so, or maybe it's public safety. Maybe they want to do a public safety walk, you know? So I think, you know, figuring out, like, our colleagues were saying, like, what is it, what is it that are, what are these communities concerned about and how can we address them? I think that's, that's really important, that I think that we'll all get more out of the meetings that way.
Oh, uh, so this is all very, very new to me, and I hear that you are wanting, like, specifics. And I don't think that I have any specifics to lend, but I do want to echo what other members have said, where I think that it doesn't need to start as a work session. It needs to start as some sort of action item and therefore we work session, you know? I don't want to, and, sorry, I'll stop that thought there. And I absolutely agree that whenever we can meet people where they are, that is what I would like to do. With all due respect to open meetings, of course. It it bothers me that I'm hearing everyone talking, and GHI is the absolute closest place, and that is where we have gone. So I I do want to be really, really mindful that we are getting out in the community as much as we can so that we do engage people where they are.
Okay, well, I mean, tonight's sort of an interesting example. We we talked with Gate. It's been a couple of years, maybe three years since we talked with them. There's no real burning issue, and the MOU was already signed. So, you know, I I think meeting people where they are, but, you know, sometimes I think there's a little bit of gap between what council is thinking and staff. You know, and Shania and staff have to, you know, reach out to these organizations and try and set up meetings or set up a dialogue. And sometimes it's very, very difficult to do that. You know, try to what, did you have, go ahead, please?
Well, you know, it is, I mean, it's a great idea to go out and meet people where they're at and all this, but, you know, the council has tried that many times over the years that I've been here. And it's easier said than done, you know? I mean, engaging people is is a hard thing sometimes unless there's a brewing issue that everybody's affected by, then people come out. But if with a lack of that, it's very hard. And in fact, you know, I think over the years, it it's shown me that it's counterproductive to try to meet, move our meetings around to different places because that just confuses people. Then they don't know, you know, if we're meeting at the same time in the same place all the time, people, they learn that and they know where we are and and, you know, then they can make it there. But if we're just moving our our meetings around from here to there, people get confused. They don't know when we're meeting or anything else, and it's, it becomes counterproductive.
Danielle?
Well, I I think, I I agree that there can be some consistency. You know, especially maybe the times that we have them, making sure there's consistency around that. But I do think that, you know, just going to what Mayor Protam was saying around the engagement that we had for the walkthrough with Green Belt Station, that was on a different day. It was in the community and we had a lot of engagement there, so.
Well, I think at least.
Right. And even, so another example of meeting people where they are is, you know, Gate did an open house. I can't remember when it was. But that was an opportunity to actually go to Gate, see how they work. They were able to ask us questions. We were able to ask them questions. We actually saw people who were doing work in the studio. So I actually think that there's some value in seeing that. So that's going to where they are, which was not, you know, a hard thing to do as well.
Well, I mean, tomorrow is an interesting example. It's a National Night Out. So over at Beltway Plaza, there'll probably be sixty, seventy people at least, and throughout the city, and our police officers will be there. Hopefully, our firefighters will have a strong presence as well. So, I mean, there are formal ways that you can engage on a regular schedule. There's informal ways, and I I think you have to do both. I have to concur with with Mr. Roberts. You know, we we have tried, and over the years, we did go out, not just to GHI, but, you know, all over to these stakeholders to meet with them. And I think it is important to, like with Gate, I had suggested that we actually hold the work session at Gate tonight instead of here. But it's kind of small over there. I mean, we could have done it. But, yeah. Mayor Protam?
Well, I think one thing we maybe need to think about this, this right now is a a work session scheduling schedule. But it does not incorp- encompass all of the different things that we talked about in terms of engaging these communities. So I think one thing might be to rethink this, that we keep still the elements of of the schedule. But, for example, in addition to the work session with Franklin Park, we also went and got a tour of of some of the new updates that they've done there. And that was, that was an opportunity to engage with the with that and with some some really active residents from over there. So maybe one thing would be to rethink, and then we could add in the community walk, so make this not just about the work sessions, but keeping track of ways we're engaging with the community and then be very deliberate about it. So, for example, for National Night Out tomorrow, are there, what are, what what questions, are there things that all of us as council members should be asking people and sort of tallying up and keeping note of, and then coming back and reporting back when we're talking to people at 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 National Night Out? Is is it simple of what's the biggest issue on, what's the biggest green belt issue on your mind these days? Maybe it's as simple as that, that we, each of us all ask people that and actually, you know, write it down in our phones and say, and then we can go back and say, okay, Danielle, what did you hear? Kristen, what did you hear? And so on. And and use that as an engagement opportunity, because it's not just Beltway, it's not just the back of Beltway Plaza. There's five different events. So we could, we could all, we, please, we could all go out there and ask that question and then bring that back and say, how many people did we talk to? So I would propose that. Let's do that tomorrow night.
I'm gonna do that, regardless of this conversation. I always.
Well, then let's, let's deliberately make a plan that 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 we all ask, do we like that question? Do we like a different question? That as part of the National Night of, Night Out events tomorrow, we go out and talk to people and say, what is your biggest green belt issue that you're thinking about? Maybe make a note of what part of the city they're from and actually compile all of the information that council gathers and and talk about that at a later work session.
Certainly, and I always do that. That's.
Okay, well, then bring back your notes.
I don't know if I'm gonna bring back my notes as such.
Just maybe it would be helpful to maybe have some definition around, and maybe this is just me as a newbie. What, how do we define a work session and what are our goals of a work session versus what are our goals of engaging the community and getting information and connecting with them on a different level? Because I think there's two, there's two different things. So this list, on some level, is doing two things, right? It's, it is trying to make sure that we are engaging with the community in a lot of different ways. And I think the point is, is that we can do that without a work session. But a work session also should be a work session where it should also have some clear goals and objectives that we're trying to bring out of that. And maybe some of the things that we learn in public engagement activities and events informs what should actually go into the work session. So it's almost, you know, two things that we kind of need to plot out. So.
Well, I I would urge council to actually submit questions for a work session. I mean, tonight's a good example. I was sort of fishing around for things, and I think I managed to hit on most of the important points around funding and metrics and what's coming up next and who are you and who's on your board. But for staff and for whoever's leading the meeting, it's important to have that input. So I would ask all of you to, you know, submit questions or thoughts for the agenda in advance.
Yes. And if we have the agenda, I think we've talked about this before. If we understand what the objective is for the agenda, that helps, at least me, to create and think about what questions I want to ask. Because I I was not a part of the last Gate work session, so I don't necessarily know what was discussed, what action items came from that work session, what do we need to follow up with? So if I knew that, that would also help me create, because some of the informal kind of things I learned when I did a walkthrough at Gate. So that's, yeah.
It's important. It helps that they have the minutes from the last couple of meetings.
Well, and that.
Staff does a pretty good job of doing that. Sometimes it's hard to, if we were talking about something relating to a work session and it was in a council meeting, sometimes that conversation or those notes are actually in the meeting and not in the last work session. But, you know, I think it's really helpful to have minutes.
But we also don't usually get those minutes until the packet gets sent out, which means that the agenda is already created. So I think that that's, that's, that's part of the issue if we look at. So I think, for example, it could be productive this evening to look at what we have coming up next. So we have the all-resident voting initiative. We, I mean, we already, I think that's a little bit more clear, actually, in terms of what our objectives are for that one. And that, but then, so if, for example, tonight, we talked a little bit about the advisory board and committee chairs work session and what we want to get out of that one, what questions we want to make sure we ask, and do that work right now. And then the, we may not be able to do the recognition group policy review, because I know that's, a lot of that is, is a Greg, Greg Varda and that sort of thing, so that we may not be able to have, be, speak intelligently about that one, but that's at least a couple weeks out. I do think worth noting on that, the upcoming ones, we do have very specific things we want to talk to Beltway Plaza about, and I know Shania, you're trying to schedule that, that, that meeting. But that is one that I think, you know, very clearly, we have some things that we want to talk to them about. That one is, yeah, on the list.
That's why we're having the the conversation. And I think, you know, every two weeks, we should actually block out at least a half an hour time to talk about the upcoming works. And that is something that I I talked with Mr. Summerone about just to figure out, well, hey, what's on the, what is he gonna put on the the agenda at the next council meeting? But if you want to skip to that instead of kind of looking over this framework, we can certainly do that.
I guess I don't know, is there more to talk about on that framework? We talked about a few specifics.
Yeah, I mean, is there anything, are there any work sessions changes on this list, things you want to pull off?
Are you, are you asking us if there are things that we think we don't need to discuss anymore, or if we are asking, if you're asking for what we would like to prioritize on this list? I I'm unclear at this point what the question is.
I'm asking both. I'm asking you, all of you, you know, are there things on this list? Are there organizations, entities on this list that we don't need to talk to every year, every two years, as needed? And also, I'm asking, are are there stakeholders that we need to include on this list?
Well, I think I would absolutely defer to you and Mr. Roberts as far as if there are any on this list that have not proven useful over the course of your tenure on council. As I am so new, I could not speak to that. As to my, who I would add, I can't think of anyone off the top of my head as to what I would prioritize. Definitely Beltway Plaza. If we're like looking at who we need to really sit down and have a work session with, that jumps out to me as the most important, as there is that, so much change happening there. The others definitely seem like more of a, as things come up, we can prioritize them.
Okay, so we, I mean, if there are any items you you want to move down to meetings as needed, as opposed to annual or biannual, that that's fine. And we haven't formally sat down and talked with NASA for a while, but I feel like there's pretty good communication there.
On the schedule, it wouldn't be until next year.
We've been trying to meet with Beltway Plaza for a long time because of the changes over there. We haven't been able to nail down a date, but we definitely need to to talk with them about how they're moving forward. Park service, I don't see any burning issues there, but, you know, every two years. Greenway Center, I'd like to prioritize talking to Greenway Center. I'd like to talk with them sooner.
What issues would you like to bring up with them?
Well, I'd like to talk about development. I'd like to talk about the the vacancies there, the number of businesses that have left. I'd like to talk about whether or not there's something that we can do in talking with them that would help them to envision what what the future looks like there. I'm very concerned about Greenway Center.
I would also like to, I know we used to do our legislative dinner later in the year, but I would like us to consider doing that earlier this year because our our legislator, our senator and our delegates, they start like submitting bills in like October, November, like they're, they start work in just basically a few weeks. So if we meet with them, so this is the time to meet with them, right? Because, which is not, I know it's not technically, it's kind of a work session. We usually do it as a dinner, but it's kind of like a work session because we're talking about our legislative priorities. But I would just suggest that in place of one of our work sessions, we try to do that meeting as early as possible this year, instead of waiting till later in the year, just so that we can, you know, actually maybe get our priorities at the top of their list.
Hey, I definitely agree with you on that. I was talking with Mr. Summerone, so we're going to, the date that we were going to talk about that, the legislative
On the nineteenth, sorry, on the fourteenth, on the fourteen, so.
Get our books in order, out priorities.
I'm sorry, say that again. We're gonna talk about.
On the nineteenth.
Of this month.
This month.
Got it.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth.
We're gonna talk about that, okay.
Okay, so, but the, but I, but I would agree that. Okay, so, but, but I, but I would agree that I think we, I think it's not too soon to start reaching out to, for, for good dates for the actual legislative dinner itself. We've got all these TBD dates. If we can find one of those dates, I think, and, and see if we can find something that works for, for our colleagues, the other elected colleagues.
I agree. And to add some context to it, the pre filings happen in November. Trying to get a legislative dinner in November and onward with the delegates is going to be difficult. So if one, our, our first pick of a date is gonna be October and earlier, so September and October.
Great. And then here's another question, sorry. I, I'm recalling the BARK work session from last year. It was one of my first work sessions. And I just remember a lot of the questions that we had for them, they couldn't answer. They were like, oh, we can't answer that. You need to talk to BEP, I think it was. And so maybe we need to have a meeting with BEP since most of our questions were for them, like they wouldn't answer a lot of our questions. Does anyone else remember that? They were like, oh, we can't speak to that. We can't really speak to that. So, because I remember we had this great list of detailed questions and they were just kind of like, sorry, we're not allowed to talk to you about it. So I don't know if we want to try for that.
I think that's a good idea. Our staff, you know, Ms. Ruby's been working with them, following things, but yeah, let's, I think we should meet with the BEP. The Bureau of Engraving and Printing.
In similar fashion, I feel like we got a similar response when we met with the State Highway Administration. And so there was a lot of open questions that were not answered. So even though that is on an annual basis and that comes later in the wintertime, but we might want to start prepping for that earlier so that they know when they're coming, we're expecting a follow-up on those open things that they, you know, didn't have information about.
Now, State Highway, I think it's a little different because we, we actually submitted the questions in advance and they still didn't answer them. Of course, it was nice in the four cities meeting to have the, the regional director there and we were able to actually reinforce some of the points we brought up. But sending questions in advance, in some cases, it's really helpful. And in other cases, some of these stakeholders just won't answer our questions. Like the school board member. I, you know, I really do think we, we should, when was the last time we talked to Mr. Briggs?
Looks like it was last August, last August.
It's too bad we can't meet with him. We should meet with him as soon as possible.
I feel like it's kind of hard for us to get on a schedule, so maybe we should start asking him now, when he can, you know what I mean? Like, I just feel like that's been a problem in the past. There've been like, it's hard to get on a schedule and then there's cancellations. And so maybe if we can get on there, we can, I don't know. He could pencil us in earlier, further in the future or something, maybe that'll-
Is it worth in that conversation? Because we had talked with Mr. Varda about collaborating with the schools on utilizing the facilities. Like I'm wondering, especially at Greenbelt Middle, and he was going to look at doing the MO, he had written an MOU. I'm just thinking about what's the objective when we're meeting with the school board or the school system? That is a, a immediate issue that we wanted to follow up with.
So maybe that's more, more productive rather than just saying that we have a meeting with the school board member, see if we can make it specifically with the right people who, who could potentially help us work through some of the, 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 the field usage issues.
That, that's true. Oh, sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I'm thinking that some of that may come up just from our side during the, the business plan presentation from Mr. Varda, just talking about where he is with redrafting, re-envisioning the, the MOU. That's not so much the school board number, that's, that's more the school administration and their, their facilities department specifically, getting permission to, to take some, to help them to maintain the middle school field in exchange for allowing the city to, to do some programming there.
But is that the meeting we really need rather than with our school board member then?
Well, I think we need a meeting with our school board member, just see what he's doing, what he, to see what sort of things he has planned for interacting with our PTAs and PTOs and as school starts, you know, he should be advocating for our, our priorities. It's two different, two different meetings. Yeah, Mr. Roberts?
Well, I want to get back to the State Highway and the BEP because I saw the surveyors out on Kennelworth Avenue a week or so ago. So they're out there surveying and that's the, that's their first step into turning Kennelworth Avenue into the newest highway in the state of Maryland. So that's, that's a huge issue that is gonna transform Greenbelt into, you know, a worse place to live instead of a better place to live because we're gonna have another highway surrounding us. And that's why they don't want to talk to us because they want to do what they want to do. So if we don't want them to do what they want to do, then we have to start now and fighting that. But I don't see any, any move towards us doing that. And just having a work session with them is not gonna change the equation. We need to do more, more than that.
Do agree that we need to halt a public work session with them.
One other thing, sorry, this is going back to the schools, the, the schools thing. It might be a good idea for, maybe not this fall, but pencil in possibly for the spring to do a meeting with Jason Washington, who's the director of like construction and infrastructure, alternative construction and infrastructure planning for PGCPS, just to give us an update on Spring Hill Lake. Just, I mean, because we, we know the projected beginning of construction is 2026, but this is again, this is the kind of thing we kind of need to just keep our eye on and see, you know, if there have been any changes. Maybe he could provide some blueprints to us or plans. But I think that would be a, a good work session to have. I think the public would be interested in that too, so. Yeah, his name's Jason Washington. He's the director of alternative infrastructure planning and development at PGCPS.
Thank you.
So I think he might be a good one. If not the fall, then the, probably the spring. I believe so, yeah. That's probably Jason.
Yeah, Danielle?
On another topic on the meetings as needed, I feel like there was also some follow-up with the Roosevelt Center owner and what the next steps are there. Is that something that we can schedule and be very specific about, you know, what's happening with some of the updates, renovations, all of that?
You're, you're not in the mic?
Uh, we're, we're working on, on scheduling a, a, a meeting with the, with the owners. And as a result of that meeting, we'll provide an update on where things are with the property.
Yeah, just quickly kind of glancing at this meetings as needed, you know, we've got apartments down there, that's kind of vague. We have talked with Charleston North quite a bit. You know, perhaps we, at some point in September, need to have another session just with the management company that's, that's working over there, just for the public. Maybe not.
I, I, I had a meeting last week with the representative. He was in for a few days from, from Texas. And so we, we checked in about where the vacancies are, where the repairs are, where the property is headed. He'll be back in a couple of weeks. I can get a date, a firm date, and we can see how it fits into our, our work session schedule if this is something-
It could be a work session, it could just be a presentation at the beginning of a council meeting, 10 or 15. I mean, some of these, like newly elected or appointed officials, the last time we had the, the county executive here was towards the beginning of her term and she just came on at the beginning of a council meeting and talked for 15 or 20 minutes. It's not a full work session. Same thing with the state's attorney. She basically came and spoke with us, but it wasn't really a full work session.
Yeah, we'll probably want to invite the new at-large council member once they're elected.
Find out what happens tomorrow. Well, I know tomorrow's the primary, excuse me.
Primary.
The primary.
It's a, you know, there's still a general.
Right. Yeah, it's good to talk with the University of Maryland. There's no burning issue, but that, that's a little bit of a problem. We haven't spoken with them for a work session in five or six years at least. It says 2015. I think we talked with them after that.
Well, they, they gave some presentations at the four cities meeting since then. I don't, I mean, I haven't, that's well before that, but I know we've, we, we have had some information from them, just not at a city council work session.
That's a good point. What used to happen is every two or three years when we met in College Park, the president, in this case, Dr. Pines, would come and address the group. He's not done that yet. He's been in office now about three, three years, four years.
So we have some upcoming work sessions. I think Kristen was going, can we go to, can we talk about what our objectives are?
And talk about our objectives.
Unless you want to, if there's other questions.
But I, I would like to ask Shania, what have you been working on? I know that you and Ms. Anderson do a lot of work and spend a lot of time trying to chase down these stakeholders to schedule them. And frequently you have to reschedule three or four times. So what, what's on your priority list?
Microphone, you might need to pull that one over or move it, move over to here if it won't go far enough.
Can you hear me? I'll move. Hello? At this time, only thing that me and Ms. Anderson had scheduled on the 30th of September, this hasn't been updated. We use that day as for the advisory board interviews. We take the last date of the month to schedule interviews. We're waiting on council's direction to schedule, so we was waiting on council to direct.
Okay. Well, so Wednesday, you know, we've got the all resident voting initiative and we've got some legislation, proposed legislation has been drafted by the Board of Elections. So the objective in that discussion would be to take public comment and input, sort of hash some things out. And in my thinking, we would move from there to putting it on a council agenda, maybe for first reading, second reading. It's a pretty important piece.
The legislation is drafted, at least the proposed legislation, and it would be ready to go on, on the August 12th meeting for first read.
It's pretty clear now, the August-
Although-
12th meeting.
That is, does that give us an, if there, if there are any changes or edits, that doesn't get enough time to get it on, that, that's, that's Wednesday and then that following meeting is Monday. That seems like a pretty quick turnaround. I'm not sure if we want to, it might be better to put it into the, the one first meeting in September, just to not, I, we, we have to have it done by the next election. I don't know that we need to rush to do it, you know, four days after the work session.
Yeah, that's a point. How do, Jenny, how do you feel about that?
I mean, I think if the legislation is ready, like we should go ahead and just do it. I don't think there's any reason to wait. I think if there are major issues at the work session, we can wait, but I think if not, I don't see why we would. I mean, if the legislation, because it's been drafted, like it's been fully drafted by Steve, right? So I think it'll be ready to go unless there are, again, major things that we need to change that he wouldn't be able to alter, so.
The problem is, is that that Wednesday evening work session is after the deadline for the news review. So we would have to decide before we've had the work session whether it gets on the agenda for Thursday's news review about the Monday meeting.
I would think that, you know, if, if there's no time constraint as far as, you know, moving forward, given that this wouldn't be covered by the, the news review, perhaps, you know, if we just put it on the agenda, the first meeting in September, that would give us a little bit more time for people to read about it and think about it.
Well, I mean, it's been on our August agenda, work session agenda for like a month now. So it's not that nobody knows that this is coming. I think we could have it tentatively on the agenda for the 12th. I don't see why, if it's not ready, we would remove it, but I don't see why we couldn't have it on there in anticipation of just go ahead, going ahead and moving forward with it.
Well, what else is on the agenda for the meeting on the 12th?
Well, I'm sorry, while you're pulling that up, is there also a next step? When is the next time we would have a work session that follows up the community meetings with Tri-Besi? Would that fall in September or would that fall in October?
The earliest we could do that would be the regular meeting on November, on September 23rd. The public meetings are, are, are still happening around that timeframe. I think we will want to leave some room for them to compile their data and start doing some preliminary aggregations of first meeting in October.
Thank you.
There is benefit of doing it in, in that meeting because I think it coincides with the Tri-Besi group being here.
That's what I was thinking.
And they could be in person.
That would be ideal if we could do that. And they'd be in person to answer those questions.
So we could, we could schedule something that just, as a check-in, with the understanding that there be some information that's still left to, to go through.
So I was talking with Mr. Summeron this afternoon, as I do every week, and there's just a lot of things on the agenda that administration is placing on there. So that will-
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, the LPR update. There's legislation negotiated purchase, first reading. There is a police body camera, TASER contract renewal, stop sign ordinance, online, online bill pay. There are some consent agenda items, council approval of vehicle, stakeholders list, grant against website renewal and reappointments and resignations from advisory boards and committees.
Okay, so it's a pretty full agenda.
The presentation from, on the stop sign ordinance will have Darryl Carrington Group present on enabling the legislation at the state, what we need and expect from the county and what we will need to do to adopt ordinances that would allow for stop sign cameras in the municipality.
Okay.
LPR, we have a presentation at the request of council to go through the locations, data aggregation and where does the data go. So it's a comprehensive presentation on the LPR programs. The bill pay is, it's a, it's a good initiative. We're gonna roll out the, the ability for residents to pay online via e-checks and credit cards and debit cards. The, what we're asking council for is explicit authority if council wishes to continue to pay, cover the cost of those online transactions. And they can vary from a couple cents on e-checks to a percentage basis on credit card transactions.
Should be an interesting discussion.
Depending on the credit card, it could be as high as 3% of the bill.
So it's a lot of things on that, that agenda.
I'm in the weeds of it, so every day, so it's, yes, there can be things that we need to talk through because they cost money. A lot of this has financial impact.
Okay. We've got that retreat, so we'll be talking about legislative priorities. We'll be talking about our plan a little bit, but I think we'll probably spend a fair amount of time just talking about trying to get our ducks in order about our legislative priorities so that we can be in a place to share them in September as soon as possible. The special meeting is kind of, that's gonna be council just talking with HR, just hammering out a few things before we do the evaluation in September. The advisory board and committee chairs, I see that, that's mostly a listening session. So, you know, I would ask each advisory board chair to talk about their membership, talk about the, the number of people that they have on the committee and their needs, talk a little bit about their priorities for the coming year. It's a listening session. Yeah, please.
Well, and that's what I think that those, and that's very similar to what I just write, wrote down just before this, but that's what I think we want to plan out and use this as work time so that we can ask then those board chairs to prepare ahead of time slides that maybe, so that we can be efficient about sharing this information. So maybe a listing of current members, number of current vacancies. And then I think three biggest achievements from the last year or up to three biggest achievements from the last year and then three goals or priorities. last year, and then three goals or priorities for the next year. And then if we can get through, I mean, and that seems like a pretty reasonable thing to have everybody go through. And then I think then we could have some conversation about maybe some connections between advisory boards and committees, a little bit more discussion about are there things that, that council would like to see from those advisory boards and committees? But I think if we can have, unless somebody has anything else to add to sort of those four things on a, on a prepared on slides.
I know one of the things that's come up as part of APB is a question around membership and.
Policies, just whether or not if someone is away for an extended amount of time, can they still participate?
So it might be good to get their feedback from, well, get feedback from other advisory boards and committees on the, the number of people sitting on the committee, the policies around, you know, how they interact, if, if they've been participating, if they've not been participating, the consistency in the makeup, they just might have some feedback and maybe want some direction from us moving forward.
That, that is something we usually ask. You can ask them in advance.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I forgot a significant one that we need to put on the agenda, and that's the proposal for the charter review committee. We discussed.
That's it for the meeting coming up.
Well, we, we, internally, we talked about putting it on that 12th meeting. It's, it's already a heavy meeting. Do you have a preference that we try to get through it on the 12th or we push it to September?
Well, if it's, it is time sensitive, but it's not that time sensitive. So I think we can talk about that, the first meeting in September, because that's a substantial, that's, that's a big conversation.
And welcome feedback on others, some thoughts on the proposal, so anything you want to get, get to us on, on how that, that project was proposed, particularly the, the different makeups of the different bodies.
I think we have to still get some additional input from the public on that, even though we had the work session, we talked about it.
The, looking at the agenda, the advisory board and committee chairs, that's a good brain trust to source ideas and feedback on. And, and we'll have them all in one room.
Yeah, so that could be, so maybe if we have the four things that the committee chairs are, that we ask them to prepare, and then this discussion that Danielle suggested about, about dealing with, with, with vacancies or people.
Extended absences.
Extended absences, and then maybe also a little bit of an opportunity to talk to them about the charter review committee and, and get their feedback on it. Those could be sort of after we go through the, each of the, the board chairs give their updates and then have a little bit of discussion more broadly on those two topics.
Yeah, yeah, and we have always asked that question about membership and whether or not people are not, if they're going to be gone for a while. I mean, each, each of the advisory boards has their own governance and they can, to some extent, figure out how they want to work as a group. And it really does vary quite a bit from one advisory board to the next, as you know.
But it sounds like it might be helpful for them. I'm not sure how often the advisory board chairs get a chance to talk to each other.
Every year.
Right, which is not that often.
Okay, so we'll move the charter review proposal to the first meeting in September, which is September 9th.
Let's see, recognition group, review, community center business plan. That's staff reporting out to us mostly.
Correct. The first item here is to, in response to council wanting a process to award grants from its miscellaneous grant funds that exceed $16,000.
Right.
So this is a, during this work session, we'll, we'll present the proposal for camps, council to accept that proposal as a process to award those funds in the September meeting. This.
Yeah, if you want to get that out to us in advance, that'd be great. Danielle?
Will that also include the actual process for somebody to become a recognition group?
We can include that, yes. There's a, there's a, yeah, there's a packet that goes with it.
How does that packet get communicated out to the community? So thinking about process, we have a packet, but I know it's probably a couple clicks down in, in our website. Throughout the, like, starting at what time in the year does notification get sent out and how does it get sent out? And is that the process? It may not be the process.
It, it certainly is that institutional knowledge. It happens in the fall and everybody knows that it happens in the fall and so on, but everybody, no, no, that's what I'm kidding. That's what I'm kidding about it. Everybody doesn't know.
If something comes up, you know, if a group wants to apply, whenever they form, they, they can.
And that's the distinction between just being a recognition group. You can apply to be a recognition group at, at any time. And that, and it's just, the funding only happens once a year. But to, to be a recognition group and get the, and get those benefits because there have been mid-year reviews, like when I was on Prab, there were mid-year reviews of this person applied and then Prab looks at it and gives, gives feedback. They just, there's a difference between the contribution groups that actually get money and the recognition groups that that actually can happen at any time.
Correct. And actually, we're going to have a recognition group application for council to.
Really?
Accept at the next council meeting, yes.
Yeah.
I, I think it just would be helpful to have some clearer information on a recognition group, how do we contribute? And then, over the course of the year, how do, how do community members and organizations find out about that?
Right.
And codify that somewhere, that that's part of, one of the things Tribesi has saying, we need to be able to communicate that a lot better. And we have not.
Well, that pretty much takes us up to Labor Day. And, you know, I think that these calendar discussions, you know, I, I had intended that we, you know, have them on a regular basis. So I think, you know, maybe at the beginning of the month, month, each month, perhaps we should take half an hour, 45 minutes to just kind of talk through the upcoming. It's just sometimes things change so fast and staff work is really, really hard to get these set up and then someone will back out at the last minute. But, you know, I think talking about what the conversation, what the expectations are is a good way of just making sure that we're all on the same page. Yeah, Mr. Samron.
I'm, I'm sorry, there's a second portion to the August 28th meeting, and that's the Greenbelt Community Center Business Plan. There's a business plan that's created a long time ago for the community center where it's, the, many of the rooms are designated for room rentals so that the community center has a steady stream of revenue. With, with having so many recognition groups and providing free space and all these amenities in the center, the, the business plan needs to be reviewed because it stated that many of these rooms will be for rentals, but to generate an income for the center. So that's one of the discussions that Parks and Recreation wants to discuss.
Mr. Roberts?
Well, the community center was not meant to have, you know, to be a revenue stream. The community center is meant to be a place for the citizens to use, not for the city to use as a office building or anything else. So the thought that we're going to go back and change that, I think, is a bad, extremely bad idea. Because that's, that's the people's building. It's not ours to use to create a revenue stream. You know, yes, we can get revenue from the art, from the things that go on in there that the people are doing, but, you know, this thought that, you know, it should, we need to, you know, somehow change our mode of operandi, I think, is, like I said, just bad idea. Another bad idea.
It'll be a lively discussion and certainly, you know, it's important to have a plan and to the extent that, that we can make sure that our operations there are sustainable, where they're, like, take the commercial kitchen, for example. I just, I feel like it's underutilized and entrepreneurs and other people are looking for a space like that. And we've got it and it's underutilized. So hopefully those are the kind of things that we'll be talking about.
Right, the, the, there is no proposal to change it as a revenue stream for the city. The, the revenue stream from the business plan, as I understand it, it's for the community center itself. It's a reinvestment in the community center, not the city's functions. It's for the community center.
I understand better. Yes, Mayor Potem.
So the only other thing that, at least last year and maybe the year before, that work session right before Labor Day weekend, we did do virtual only. So, and just because the parking lot will be. Filling up with carnival equipment. So is that, is that the plan still? So the 28th, I think that's worth noting then, so that the 8/28 will be virtual only. Is that right?
I have it as a virtual on my sheet.
This Lashley Mullen has.
Do a motion Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have to do a motion on Monday to make that a virtual meeting.
Oh, is that right?
Do we for work sessions? Okay.
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 Sounds good. So as I said, let's, let's do this on a regular basis, at least once a month. And, you know, I think it helps staff when it comes to scheduling these. And we outlined a number of priority work sessions. Mr. Samron, I saw you taking copious notes as usual.
Took some notes.
So let's prioritize those meetings. The legislative piece, I think, is important. The city of Bowie, I understood, they, they actually did their legislative dinner last week, so they.
Really early.
Well, in advance, you know. So got a couple of information items, but I see that we have a question. Yeah, sir, please. Is it council's will?
I, I, this is a work session, I think, yeah.
Okay, well, let's go to information items. So with, and I, I'm not going to recognize you, sir. So here's an information item. The opening of that establishment, Royal Farms, I believe that's coming up on the 14th. And I was driving past there, and I think we need to do a check-in with the, the car dealership around parking enforcement, because I've noticed over, over the, recently over the years, that, that they tend to use that as a staging area. And even passing by today, there's cars parked on both sides of the street, almost blocking the entryway. So perhaps our code enforcement or police could have a conversation to, to see if they have it worked out and if we do need to step up enforcement or somehow change the parking patterns over there, maybe. I don't think spaces are actually lined in. I don't think there are lines over there.
Is it the 14th or the 19th? I thought.
So they're, they're having a soft opening on the 14th. There's, there's something on, on Facebook, notices going out.
Okay, because the date that Terry gave us at the work session on Monday was the 19th. So I don't, maybe it's the soft opening and then they're doing an official opening on the ribbon cutting on the 19th.
We don't know for sure. We're checking into that, but they're doing a soft opening on the 14th.
Right, on the 14th and.
Chicken involved, too.
Okay.
I checked this afternoon, there were still tickets available.
I thought, I saw that there weren't. Yeah.
You have to RSVP. And if you go in there, it'll look like it's all booked up. You have to scroll down to the, the last available date, and there's still some openings.
Okay.
Let's see. Just a reminder, I guess the primary elections tomorrow, this is very, very important. So the Dropbox, there's one over at the Berwin Heights, that's the community center right there on Pontiac. That's the closest Dropbox station. So I guess the polling places will be open as well.
Yeah, there's a somewhat limited list.
Has everybody voted?
I took my, I dropped mine off today.
Got mine ready to drop. Okay.
So what I wanted to ask about was, we sent the letter to Chief Green about a public meeting. Have we heard, specifically about scheduling the public meeting? Because I think one of the reasons we wanted to get, we were hoping to be able to get the date announced and put in the news review this week. And I know that means that we have a deadline of tomorrow. Have we heard back yet?
I don't know.
Okay, and is there a point at which we just need to pick one of those two dates for the, for the meeting so that it can go in the news review if we have not heard back from Chief Green about selecting those two dates, one of those two dates?
Yeah, I don't believe we've heard anything back. We can try and follow up tomorrow or the next day.
I can give, I can give the office a call and try to.
I think it would be helpful because I think if we want to get it in the news review, we need to get it to them tomorrow, the date tomorrow. And so that might mean that, that if we have not heard back on their preference, we have to pick either, because I think we gave them the 13th or the 14th.
We gave them both options as a.
Not heard back. So speaking of the news review, there was, there was an article in the news review last week on public safety and police statistics. And unfortunately, the, the information in there was incorrect. There was, there was an error. So I know the, the police chief has pointed this out. Is the police chief, or are you, are we going to submit, are we going to ask for a correction? Because unfortunately, the statistics that were listed on the level of crime in Greenbelt is not right.
Yes, we are asking for a correction and they have accepted, they have acknowledged the mistake in the data, and they are working with us to print a correction and possibly a whole new article.
Other information items? Yeah, please go ahead.
Just a bit of fun or information. I've talked to a few members, but I haven't had a chance to talk to everybody. We put in to have a city council booth at Information Day during the Greenbelt Labor Day Festival. And the thought was is that we could just be there at different times. We don't have to be there the whole day, but maybe share that time if residents wanted to stop by and ask questions and be able to engage that way. So I submitted for that to be done. So if you are interested in being in the booth, I know most of us walk around during Information Day, but if there's a set time during that Information Day time slot that you would like to just be posted at the booth, I am happy to set up the tent and things like that. All you have to do is show up, but let me know what time you'd like to be there.
I'll try and come through in, in the afternoon. I have a standing event for the past 15 years, or actually more than 15 years. I've done, the Greenbelt Tennis Association hosts a tennis social and cookout over in Greenbrier. It's on Saturday from 9:30 till about 1:30. And it's pretty wiped out towards the end of that, but I'll try and come by at about two.
Okay. Do we have, oh, Sway, would we have, like, a City of Greenbelt tablecloth or something that we could use?
Yeah.
Work with you to get some, get some stuff. Make it official.
Or have some swag.
All right.
Whatever swag we have.
Maybe some, some forms to sign up to be, or information about signing up for advisory boards? Maybe a little QR code.
Yes.
We could do that, we could do that.
Go straight to the application.
There you go.
Yeah, we can look at the list of which, what, what we have vacancies.
We can have the list there.
List of which ones we have vacancies and then.
But I don't, I'd also say if there are specific talking points and messages that we really do want to articulate to the community that we've been talking about in work sessions and meetings, that's a great opportunity because everybody doesn't necessarily listen to our work sessions and things like that. So maybe if we can share some collective messages that we want to make sure we're, we're articulating and reiterating to the community that we're all aligned on, that would be great to have.
Excellent. I have an idea on the, on the QR code. Would it be of interest that we set up a tablet, like, an iPad with a, sort of like a lead generator? Put your name and what you're interested in so that that gets sent to a chair or a council member to follow up with that individual, to close the deal? Because what happens in a lot of these things is people say, I'm so interested, I'll, I'll complete it when I get home. And then life happens, right?
Good idea. Yep, sounds good.
I'm looking at the clock on the wall and it seems to be just about at 10 o'clock, so I suggest that we close this work session and see if everybody.